As we look at our funding. Maybe next year or later, I don't know. At some point, we're gonna have to do that. So just do it each. This next up, we got the fire chief, Fire Report, July 4th.
Yeah, everybody out there, we do. It is official, August 1st, this year, it will be a class two city on Alexander. That's the first time the fire department, city fire department has ever dropped in Alexander already. The homeowners insurance, subdivision coming in, that'll be good for them. Same as when you go check around, hold me out till August. I told you, if you haven't noticed, your insurance bring me the drop from me. Our insurance says, let them know that we've changed classes. They have a question, they call me or call Alexander. But that's real good for the city. Little Rock's class two, they just recently dropped to one, but they might be going back to two by one or anything.
Right.
Yeah, they can get their pump set.
So if they go back to two, we'll be the same place, Little Rock.
You gotta have all of your stuff done directly into the fire trucks. We remember in the business, we had 248 cars per year. I don't know, I took care of the number. I don't know, important. First year, 48, there was a thing for the year. Two people in my, I can't get it right. We're right here, this morning. Three, three, four of them went to the road track stuff. Had a malfunction with the railroad tracks over there, wanted to go up. Burned out center board. The guy went back to Little Rock, he was at the center board, come back, put it in, and it's still not working. He had to go down to other box, and then they finally got bypass or something to release that, so. We have to sit out there, but we did, to help them out, help everybody outside where they get back the four hundred across the tracks, so.
Yeah, they were in early, didn't they? I had to go all the way around to get them.
Yeah, you tell me.
I lived six fifteen, I went out to Landry.
Assistant Chief drove a Ford. Assistant Chief drove a Ford, and I stopped, Little Rock's a black, she picked him up, and I met up here, and he said he didn't sit here since six thirty, so. But we took the, all the trucks and backups, we're working for ladder truck to be. Had blown out eight of four, it was all them, they fixed it. Had it back one day, took that to Federal Surplus for the dummy appreciation and the content. The MLEs, what they are doing, the National Ladder, our truck and us. We got a lot of compliments on it. Everybody doing like the way the truck turned out. The chiefs, some pretty good departments, give us a lot of compliments on the truck and everybody, so. I mean, I can try to do a good show for y'all in the city, so.
Well, we, we were able to, the fire chief was glad that they'd be agreed to come back to the city of Alexander. You, he was the person who pulled the job, revealed the fire department. So many of you remember that, at the time, January of last year, we had, most of the people worked in the fire department out here from the Crystal Ball, fire department. And I think the fire chiefs, it was two of them, splitting it up, day and weekend, between them. And Chief Ridgeway has been able to fully restamp the fire department. I don't think they had, maybe four or five people, he was working in the fire station. We barely had enough to even run the truck, fight a fire.
We were stripped of that.
So now we got fully staffed, four hour day, seven day week, fire department. He's got us down to a, his work over the last years got us down to a class two.
It's a pretty big thing.
It's a big thing.
Most of the rural fire departments try to pay volunteer. It might be five, six. We always split class, into the water system and South Alexander. When it goes into the Logan Water Facility, if you're not within the house, being an incredible item, you're still class nine. If you're within like, 7,000 people, terrible items, you're class two. I think of all these first, to, to.
Not only that, the fire chief and, probably said it, I'll say it again. Fire chief and all of his men down there, getting all these cars, bringing back out of mothballs and fixing and repairing them. We gotta have lights and radios and everything else put back in them. Taxpayers hadn't spent a dime bringing them in. The fire chief and his men has done that for the taxpayers at no cost. So that's enabled us to pull these back out and actually spend more money, putting them back on the street. And without the additional cost of having paid cap outfitters or someone else to put the lights and radios and everything back in and get on it for the street.
And if we lose two, $3,000 per car, that's, could supply the labor, that's, whether I say that, or just.
So just, yeah, just for your knowledge, to let you know that the department goes far and above what they would do just as firefighters. So they do a lot, they come out, and the street department needs help, certain areas, maybe gutters and different things, the fire department will come out and assist the street department. Also, anything the street department needs, so. Chief Ridgeway does a lot more than just is fire chief, so.
Got an email last week, we did get a subject to Arkansas Oak School for 2016. We'll be participating in that, in our, in third or fourth, ninth grade in Catawba River. Small votes will build Catawba River, big votes will build a grade. Cover two day class, we go down there Friday night for a track, sack evening, dinner, and orientation. Saturday is all day on the lake and on the river. Last time we got to go is in 2011, but we need to get on the water, because our mother's too small for the boat. We got the new mother, free, in Arkansas Forestry, spin out fitted, ready to go. I've had my people last season, they're going this year, from that B side, and totally have, we got a plan lined out for the boat, we're gonna drive, we're gonna come down there, so. I'll make a good show for that, so. Because they got lots of scenarios, some like, fireplace fire, because, like, not armor, they got forty-three, forty-seven foot, those are covered leaves out there. But they have a lot of houses that are right on the water, we don't, we're up, president chin the streets, or back creeks, or whatever. I think a lot of different scenarios from people in trees, stuck in cars. They had the down air cat scenario, U.S. Coast Guard would be out there with us, with the helicopter, doing some different scenarios. We're trying to get some pictures and information back to y'all, we often probably didn't share with them, but. We got me, Firefront Hopkins, and Firefighter Ridgeway going too. So he wasn't volunteering, he used to be paying here, but he works full time cabinet, he swapped shift to go with this, so he's been down at Oak School too.
I doubt, you got any questions to the fire chief?
Did you ever get any estimates for the four registered carriers?
Just about.
Around two sixty.
I don't know, like, could you?
Is this because of?
For what?
For the port, for the carrier, man?
No.
Like, both for best, you call three, what they did from front back, kind of like the same, the best has a, a boat, boat proof, we got home place in them. We got two sixty, but if we go to the program, we'll give the city, or city discount, change like ten percent or something. I finished with the trauma plates, and the carriage was two sixty, I'm gonna get some off of that. I said about one time, getting, say, four with the chair, but if we were to register, everybody's out, I think there can be five, no room, so I don't know. I'm checking in to see if there's any grant later, or anybody to tell later, or do a tax write-off, so I'm still working on that. I, I have to get that approval sheet, because it's, it's definitely getting worse, so.
Anything else to fire chief? Okay, I'll let you keep. They won't mention, I forgot, where the police chief is up over here. We did, Chief Barnett was able to buy from Arkansas State Surplus over here, full radar systems. For our police cars, currently, we only had one handheld radar for speeding. We now have, will have, once they're installed, four radar systems and one handheld, so. These are a little different, it's state police surplus.
Yes.
And these are a little different than the handheld, because now, an officer meets you coming down the street, he's got you on radar versus, you know, setting you somewhere with the handheld, so. That's gonna enhance our department a little more than what it is currently, so if we start getting more, which we do have now, complaints of speeding on the streets, and we got officers that. With the equipment that we can send over there, and the biggest thing is, these officers have to be radar certified. And they are radar certified instructors, so we don't have to send them off to get them certified. It can be done in-house, so hopefully, we get everyone that can be certified, certified. I don't know how many we currently have, I think two.
Radar certified officers? Yeah, I believe two.
I think NCOs is, and.
Yeah, well, there's, there are more of us now, because I'm certified, so there's, we've got, but I'm certified as instructor.
Right.
Blue, you're certified instructor, so.
We didn't have.
There are four of us that are instructors now, so.
So, you know, and can we have our reserve officers, can they be radar certified?
Uh, yes, I'm with the reserves, can be. It's the part times that can be, blue reserves can be, the part time ones can be, or the part time twos, so.
I didn't know if it was somewhere in there, on there or not. I'll ask that question later, after you find out, for sure. But anyway, and back to the cars, I'm gonna be coming back to the council, because one, I don't do anything else with those, those other ones that sit over there now, don't attempt to spend any money on. They've been sitting over already for four, five years, you know, there's no use even attempting to try to do anything with those, so. Once I, I think we have the titles, or found the folder with all the vehicle titles and stuff in it, I will be coming back to the council. Requesting disposition of those vehicles, so we can get it off of our, mainly get it out of the lot over there, get it out of the way. And you guys are the only ones that can authorize what you want to do with those cars, scrap them, or try to sell them, or, of course, we gotta follow the law. But exactly how you wanna dispose of them, or if you even wanna dispose of them, I don't see any good in any of them. Because they're just wasting a lot of money, and those are trying to put them back on the street. We took the best of what was there, and put them back on the street, so we'll be coming back with you, so. Next on the agenda, anything from the planning commission? I don't want to hear from that, so. Financial?
I'm screening the net, what happened? Did you even cancel movies?
Everybody.
Everybody should have, there, of course, up to a minute, as of today, the council showing what there is in. The decisions that are to be made can, honestly, be able to make those decisions. More than anything, what I stand up here and do is, as long as I've been here, I find that we've now got the best fire department, police department we've ever had. So my position here is, near and dear to my heart, is, of course, is to keep it that way. As treasurer, we come up with money to pay those houses, take care of the benefits and things like that, whatever. One thing that we haven't gotten, I want you to think about, and hopefully, the else that's not here, is retention, retention, retention. If you believe we've got this, then it's important to me to try to help, and it's gonna be part of yours job, is to see what we can do to set up some kind of retirement. It's something to think about, it's something I think about. It's something that will come up before you, once we get all the information together, because we've got two different things to look at here, but they need to know that we're not forgotten. So we need to know that we can keep the people we've got here. So that's one thing I just wanted to bring up to you, on my mind. Next, of course, is that, maybe you don't know, or you will find out, that if you remember, when we did the streets in San Joseph's Glen, we had, of course, the same money that went towards that. They had one of their streets, and if they ever remember to remember which one it was, I hope, but we can, we had one that just didn't really get, where they could build it the way it really needed to be, they had to redo it, redo it a couple of times. Digging a little bit further, putting more gravel and things in there, like that, to actually get it to where the specs for the street would last. In doing so, we had a little bit over expenditures on that. It's unforeseen, but at least it got taken care of. And if you look on the financial report, that is the reconciliation for street, you'll see that there was a check that went to Arkansas State Highway Transportation of $66,786. For your information, if you didn't know. Now, because of that, what I asked the council is that we'd like to move monies from surplus, which, of our surplus, right now, would be $434,000, so it'd be easily to maintain. And to keep the streets the way we need them for the rest of the year, I'm wanting to move $100,000 into that. So that's for your consideration, and the reason why. So with all the information right there, anything else you need to know, here with me, one of us, we can give you more information if you need it. But other than that, that's the reason, basically, why I'm asking that we move some of the monies into the street funds, to just build, maintain for the rest of the year.
This is separate from the monies that we approved?
Yes.
For the law?
It's not, it's been approved.
Oh, okay, I wouldn't remember which way it was, so.
All of the work was approved, we just need to move the money from reserve up to cover.
I thought we were already down that way.
No, we appropriated it when we approved the work being done, the painting of the streets. But we didn't ask at that time to move the money out of reserve, so we need to do that.
Is the spray paint aren't too sturdy?
No.
Into the, or that's two. Same thing with the budget, so that will have funds to, the street department for the rest of the year, so look ahead. Make sure. Seeing that the funds are quite adequate in there, I would take very much away to be able to look ahead, make sure that this can be taken care of. All right, everybody, we discuss anything with that, and move on to the next one?
I make the motion to move $66,786.
No, a hundred.
No, I'm asking for a hundred thousand, which is replacing that, plus a little extra, because we've got plenty of surpluses to make sure that it happens.
And I've got, we've got a lot of work to make.
Right. And in discussing, like I said, some of the plans in the mayor, it would definitely be useful to the city in various ways.
So we, can the motion, $100,000 for, to the street department?
Just a motion by Melissa, $300,000. It's open. We did have a lot of work to do this year, I'd like to get a lot more street research done, which, which is fixing to happen before the end of the year. I'll be bringing that before the council. In the meantime, I'm still hiring Marty from the Slink, he's Slink County Road Superintendent, and his guys, to work Fridays and Saturdays. Replacing still more culverts in the city that are collapsing on the streets. And one of the biggest issues along with that is cleaning the ditches themselves, so, with their equipment, so we can get the, get better drainage in the city. All of you know how it's the ditches that built up, and a lot of the ditches are above the driveway cover snap, so the water's running down the street instead of down the ditches, so. We're gonna be attempting to do a lot more of that, and I've got to have a funding and everything, to make sure that we can continue to use Marty and his guys. And the county's free of equipment, which they love us to do this work with, so that's all we're after, trying to continue improving the drainage situation in the city. Which includes the culverts on the streets, I've got, I've identified at least four right now, that we're gonna have to dig up and replace on the street, because they're collapsing, and so. And some of them are just, we don't know why they're stopped, because you can't blow them out, we don't know, we just, apparently, they're just collapsed in the middle somewhere, but dig them up and replace them, so. That's where a lot of this funding's going to, it's all going straight to, that's the only thing you can do. Uh, we got a lot of issues, all, well, no, also, in the city, we've got, we've got all kinds of signage, that's gonna have to go up in the city, I mean, we're missing. I need to order at least 25 speed limit signs at one speed, and 25 of another. Stop signs, especially when you're going out Brookwood, and as curvy as that is, we need some sign to tell you that there's a curb down there. There's a lot of signage in the city that's, that we're missing, and we don't have, that needs to go up and be erected. Especially with radar systems and everything we've got now, we fully want to make sure that the public knows what the speed limits are on those streets. Of course, it's 30, unless it was posted, so, I mean, that's, everybody's ever taken a driver's license, I bet. But, but those signs still need to be there, if you go out Brookwood, I think you might see one sign. Yeah, we need more than one sign to identify, because, you know, we don't, we want everything, make sure everything looks good and legit in the city, that there's no reason why, you couldn't say you didn't know what the state wants, because we got enough signage. So we don't look like we're trying to do things that you shouldn't be doing that way, so. Got a lot more work to do in the city, as far as that goes, and street fund money's all it can be useful, so, let's use what we can to get more street work done in the city. I know a lot of you have questions about Brookwood, I mean, Wes, does that, for instance, because from Elmo's down, it's pretty bad. I'm actually gonna ask Marty, when I get him back out here, to see if there's anything in particular they can do with that section of road down through there, because we just keep building pop away after pop away, and you build it, and it's pop away. Whether it's to resurface completely, which is what I would prefer to do. My intentions are to, all the main traveled roads in and out of the city of Alexander, as such, is I'd like to make sure that, I'd like to asphalt all the way from 111 there to Water Office, all the way out. To mix a new asphalt out in Brookwood, and that's, that's the main road through Alexander. Also, the rest is traveled on. The other place, the highway department had money budgeted last year for, to resurface Highway 5, but somehow or another, they cut your funding for it, so they never got a chance to do it, but they now have it funded. So I'm hoping this year, maybe, they'll start resurfacing 111, and that'll resurface it all the way down to the Water Office. At that point, at some time, I want to go ahead and also resurface from that point all the way back out to the edge of the city limits, south of town. And that will pretty much take care of our main, in and out to the city. And then we're gonna start moving out from there, branching off into the, all the side routes. Lonnie's got one that needs some work. Brookwood, the short stretch of Brookwood where the new subdivision's going in, eventually, there's gonna be a back way out of that subdivision, and they'll be getting on Brookwood, and I don't know if y'all seen High, it's deep up in the road or not. But it's gonna desperately need, that road's gonna need to be widened too. So it's narrow, the traffic is gonna have on it, but usually, they can scrape out far enough and resurface on that road there. You know, we got some travel roads still in the city that's, that's never been asphalt, it's just gonna need some. Fire chief, myself and the fire chief went up and looked at, was that Dogwood Ranch yet?
David Richard.
David Ranch, yeah. We went up and looked at it, and I'm gonna get a bid on it. That's gonna, that's gonna be a $200,000 plus project up there, that's gonna be enormous. That road going up to, it's almost like a single lane. It's very, very narrow. All these trees and stuff are gonna have to be cut in sections to even widen that road enough, so you can start laying asphalt. And I understand, at one of the other council meetings there, were, gonna be, developer was gonna try to put like 24 houses up there. It's gonna be expensive project for the city of Alexander, 24 houses. I hadn't got a price on it yet, but I'll tell you right now, it's gonna be enormous.
Even come up through us, or is that you?
Huh?
Even come up through you?
It's better than the other end of it.
Right.
Yeah, it's better than the other end, now, when we were up there, there's a lady up there, tried to tell us, I don't, can't remember her name, she tried to tell us that's a private road. She lives right there, she tried to say it's a private road, you know. I don't know about that, it's always been shown on all of our maps, in the street. So we're probably gonna have to do a little bit more legal digging into that, to see what we're into there. I don't believe, they had a cable dock, you couldn't even drive down, and a vehicle just parked in the middle of it, so you couldn't go down it anyway, so we've got to do some more work on that part of there, so. But that's kind of what we found out on that part, we're still, got to figure out what's ours, what's not. I'm not sure we're on the right legal footing before we come back to the council and say, this is what it's gonna cost to do that. But I will tell you now, it's gonna be enormous, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big, big price tag. Without knowing or having any type of guarantee, if anything's up in that area, it's gonna be done, so. We're gonna have to expend a lot of money, and I really, got so many other streets where people live now, nobody could live up there.
Nobody drives on it.
Nobody drives on it, and 24 houses, and we got people, areas of streets in the city that are, that are heavily populated, the streets falling apart, and talking about spending enormous amounts of money up in that area up there, so that's something. Myself and the council's gonna have to kind of look at, see if it's, if it's even feasible, or if we're gonna be able to get, if the developer wants some of them, they have to pitch in some money for. To help the city out on it, so, before we extend that kind of money for that. That's just a wild guess, from what I've seen so far, and the amount of street work that we've had done in the cities. The enormous cost that we've already had, and what we've already done, gives you a pretty good idea of what something like this is gonna cost to do. And a lot of these other streets were just doing nothing other than just laying asphalt, other than some of the streets in San Joseph's Glen, where they ended up a lot of digging out, but they didn't end up widening the roads, and cut trees and everything else to do it, so. but they didn't have to widen the roads and cut trees and everything else to do it, so. That's part of the, part of the money that we're eventually gonna have to deal with. Also, now, we will be getting, hopefully, I don't know, this year, next year, it won't be this year, I'm sure, another $250,000 or so from the State Act. I'm hoping to get some more next year, they said it takes two or three years if you've had it before it's come back around to begin. Maybe by that time, we might get some help from the State Act on some of this, but I, but we gotta kinda, gotta set our priorities here, where we wanna spend this money, where our tax rate gets the maximum benefit for it, so.
When did this State Act program start?
About four years from now, three years from now.
Oh, is that when it started?
Yeah, legislature, they have, there was a sales tax number valid, and when the sales tax, gas tax, legislature used that one cent to proceed for municipalities, for street repair and resurfacing, so that's where it's coming, it's only been around three, four years, and they told me last year they could just really get the feet on the ground with it anyway, so.
I think they have to qualify for.
Yeah.
It needs to be a city tax, kind of before, but.
There's nine mayors, I think, that have cities that sit on the board over there and decide what municipalities are gonna be running and not, so, as a mayor, believes that the seater doesn't have any more replacement to give the mayor, so the board is always changing, so. At least we do have mayors and municipalities on the board, even after voting, so that's a good thing. Hopefully, we can get, get some more next year. In the meantime, I'm gonna try to do all I can do with the existing funds that we have this year. Fire Chief has been working on getting the price for our, slowly but surely, on our sidearm bush hogs. And what I understand, that's gonna be a single-use tractor, and all it can be used for is just sidearm to reach out and do that type of work, so we can't pull a bush hog or anything. So, in the meantime, they're taking the New Holland tractor, boots of New Holland in it, they're taking it over to Pfizer's right now, trying to get an estimate on what the actual cost is gonna be for that little tractor that we've got, where they can, they don't have bush hog right now, so, because of that, so. They're carrying it over to see exactly what it's actually gonna cost to get it fixed. Supposedly, the oil pump's out on it, that's what they said, so we're actually gonna get a diagnosis on it from a mechanic, and so maybe they can give a surprise on what it might take to fix that little tractor, so they can use it for every bush hog and still get the sidearm bush hog, so. If we had it, right now, a lot of the grass on the sides of the road, even though it has been raining bad as it has been, wouldn't be as tall as it is right now, and they could cut a lot of the rest a lot faster, but we're still working on that, so. That's just a little bit more about the street department, so. We had a motion on the floor? No, I didn't forget, but I just thought I had it talked before a lot of this, so. I guess if there's nothing else, we'll take a vote. Y'all remember what I said?
Yes, sir.
Did you remember that?
Yes.
It was great for you, it was, yeah, yeah.
Well, when did Mayor forgot?
Well, I'm kinda enthused over getting so much done in the city, you know, and a lot of this work done, and I kinda wanted to bring you guys up since we was in this city anyway, and kinda where we from, and trying to head with some of this stuff, so. We take both Graham Wadley.
Yes, sir.
All right. Andy Mullins, would be a no, he's not here. Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman?
Yes.
Louis Hobbs, would be a no, he's not here. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard, would be a no, she's not here. Melissa Rattman? Two, three, four, five, motion carried? I'm through, go ahead, Ken.
Next on the agenda, we would, Mayor, something you did, this is a people call room, so I, it'll be open to the mayor and the mayor and the whole one.
Yeah, the only thing is, not on the agenda.
Correct.
It takes two-thirds vote to add to the agenda, and we don't have two-thirds.
Okay, well, then I'll hold off, and then you just, that's your copies.
Wait, 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 that's part of the financial report.
Yeah, we still, it's not, this is.
Has to be voted.
You can be the two-thirds.
It's still.
Since he can't.
Well, yeah, it's probably, anyway.
You can be early, you can be the two-thirds. You can be the two-thirds. Yeah, well, I wasn't sure whether I could be the two-thirds or not, I had to read it recently.
Any, any motion that requires the mayor's yes vote to pass. So, if you're, if you've got five to short one, he becomes the yes vote.
Yeah, anytime, anytime, I can vote anytime I vote to change the pass or something. And that's what we correct, but I wasn't sure on this, so.
Okay, good deal, we'll then proceed in the manner of what's going on, is that, as of the last meeting, I discussed with you wanting to put into effect a register. I was told, well, I need to get my ducks in order and find out, well, can I do this? Legislative audit has told me it's just more or less like this, since it was them that told me that, pretty much, that wasn't a suggestion. You can take it as a recommendation, but what they're doing is, is that it's going through pretty much all cities that they're doing in Arkansas, that this is what's pretty much replacing the policies that are being under Arkansas law, which of course is everything has to be received, everything has to be numbered, and it has to be consecutively numbered to where it is controlled. Where as a register would be able to do that, it would upgrade by using a register, because of several things that could happen with that register, more control on people who run it, more control on the amounts that go into it, that it's characterized, cataloged according to like the departments one, two, three, or four, so forth. And so forth, y'all read the memo by chance you got? I like this, it's a good memo. Which tonight, if you read that, you'll find that with the council's permission, and what this gentleman here was telling me, maybe I'd be on agenda, but at least I can give you copies of the ordinances I have made up, and you go look them over. So, like I said, I need your permission to add this into what we're doing tonight.
Sure.
I made a motion to add the.
Yeah. This is what it is, is you have to have ordinances and resolutions for what we're doing.
We're adding it to the agenda.
So, what I wanna do is just, I've already typed up, I can just pass it out to where, if it won't be approved, but you at least know what's going on, that the register is, I bought back the register that it's already been bought, we're ready to put it in effect, we just need everybody's approval. This one is, we'll base everything on the amounts and how to use it, everything.
According to municipal, the municipal, the legislative auditors, the ordinance is required to have the cash register. The, the city has to agree to buy ordinance to have it. The resolution establishes the change fund that goes into it.
So, how do you order the move?
He just didn't want to tackle, he'd like to read it.
For people who got here.
Yeah.
Well, we need to see it before we make a motion on it.
Well, we're asking for anything other than.
What you're gonna have, what you're gonna have to do, first of all, before you can even have any further discussion of it, is you're gonna have, we're gonna have to vote to whether you even add it to the agenda for tonight's meeting, so you can work on it or vote on it, so we're not get the cart before the horse. So, if somebody wants to make a motion to add it to tonight's agenda, and I would suggest that you pick one, and then you can do another. If, I would say probably the ordinance first, the resolution.
I make a motion to add the ordinance in reference to the cash register, to the, maybe to the.
Have a second.
Yes.
Stephanie.
All right. Yes, my pleasure, I appreciate it, thank you for your consideration, I will then.
We're ten dollars ago.
Very true.
We got it. We gotta see if it's not a year before they vote. Man, we'll, back to vote, Louis Hobbs, would be a no vote? Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard, would be a no vote? Melissa Rattman?
Yes.
Graham Wadley?
Yes.
Andy Mullins, would be a no vote? Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman?
Yes.
Mayor votes out, then makes it a two-thirds. Yes. So, this ordinance is now added to tonight's agenda. Need a motion from someone to pass the ordinance, so we can get it before the council for discussion.
We have to read it before we pass it.
Now, we've got to read it. It's been a long day. An ordinance establishing the procedure for making sales of copies, backs, and permits, mobile home permits, destruction fees, and permits and such other sales that might become necessary, and for public purposes and for the city of Alexander, Arkansas, and to establish the use of the cash register to complete and record all sales, and for declaring an emergency and other purposes where it's necessary to accomplish and maintain the services offered by the city of Alexander to the public. Whereas the council shall have the management control of finances and all real and personal property belonging to the corporation, is incumbent upon the governing body to establish the procedure herein now, whereas the cash register is an approved method with approved numbering system and departmental keys and personnel keys. Whereas city resources are such that demand careful accounting and control of revenues to guarantee solvency, whereas the procedure described is recommended and approved by Arkansas State Legislative Auditors. Your design by the City Council of the City of Alexander, Arkansas, is follows. Section 1, the mayor or his or her duly authorized representative shall observe the following procedures, sales of the above-captured items for the city of Alexander, Arkansas. The approval by the council of the ordinance shall amount to an appropriation fund which will offer to the items therein contained. Sales of the four-inch and items shall be made only by the approved method in funds reconciled and deposited weekly, where as required by the council, the equipment is solely for the purpose of a four-inch and sale, and for no other purpose.
Do you have a copy of that?
I have one. I'll be, and, Lonnie, wait on you guys. You're all that I need.
Gotcha.
Here we go.
And, is your approval?
I bring this forward to you only for the fact of, we're trying to bring the city forward to the 21st century of things that are going on, this is what this department is finding that they are replacing the paper trail that is theirs, that is something that will eventually be in the books to replace the paper trail that we use now. So, we're just in compliance with them, other than for you guys to read exactly that we have worded, pretty much what they say is exactly how it's supposed to be to use this register for city use.
Then, can we have a motion, so we can get it before the council?
I make a motion to approve an ordinance establishing the procedure for making sales of copies, backs, and permits, mobile home permits, destruction fees, and public purposes, and permits and such other sales that might become necessary and for public purposes in, and for the city of Alexander, Arkansas, and establish use of a cash register to complete and record all sales, declaring an emergency and other. There's no ordinance.
Have a second? Second, last question. Ask for the council, any further questions that you might have for.
Who will be running it?
It's, it'll be Jackie or whoever it's gonna be.
It would be myself and Joanne controlling it, of course. Jackie would be one that would be able to, we're proving her for one for an area, so but yeah, she'd be one that would be running it. I don't think Jamie would need to really audition.
She, she does fill in, take Jackies at large.
That's true, okay, so then you're looking basically at four people at the most, at the most that you touch that register. So, it's still within controlled means very easily. That, what's nice about it is, when you're running this machine, you will have a code. You put your code in, whatever comes through that machine is gonna say you're the one that put it in there, so it accounts for by, by the amounts, by the department, and by the person.
Which taxpayers, you know, you know, we got to protect the taxpayers' money, and we don't want anything being accused of doing anything that we shouldn't be doing. We want paper trail, paper trail, paper trail. Anytime, any, anybody, especially the cash money of any type that's coming through, we want paper trails. Never want to be accused of anything that might be going on, that shouldn't be going on up there, so.
Not to mention that when audit comes to you, they're, they're, they're the ones that are approving this, so they're the ones that are saying, okay, you're doing the right thing, and wire books, it's gonna go smoothly.
And it's gonna save the taxpayers money in the long run, just due to.
Going out, and I haven't wired those books.
Yeah, those books, I think the last thing, we, books, receipt books, the cost, cost a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, you're not gonna be writing near as many receipts, just due to the fact that you're gonna have register receipts.
It would only be that you would, end of the day, you run a tape, at the times that those books are taped together, then that can all be controlled over one receipt.
Instead of, receipt for every transaction that takes place up there, so it's gonna reduce the overall cost to the taxpayer just due to the fact that you don't have to buy any receipts.
Just the paper rolls it takes to put in the machine.
So, anytime we can find some cost savings to the taxpayer, the initial cost might be there, but some of the overall cost in the long, it's gonna be pretty substantial in the reduction of the purchase of receipts. It gets it down, basically, what, one receipt a day?
A week.
A week?
Okay.
That's gonna be a part price for every thing that comes across the county, so we can do the reduction, because of same dark skin, so. Do I have any further?
Yeah, if anything you want to ask of me, I'm here, otherwise, that's pretty much my agenda for the evening.
So, basically, the last audit that we had.
Is looking good, we haven't heard any complaints, no problems, nothing yet, they haven't pulled some actual result, but we've complied very well with everything they asked.
But that audit gave rise to the need for a factory.
Yes, it came straight from them.
Now, you spoke to someone.
Christopher, Chris, people on the auditors.
Yes, I am, go ahead.
One of the things we were doing, we were making change out of petty cash, and that's, we can't do that, they put a stop to that that day. And this establishment of the funds, the change fund that goes into the cash register, is what that's for, and it brings us into not only a legal parameter of what they expect, but it adds another level of security, because the money, instead of being kept in a shoebox and then in a file drawer, or in a bag in a file drawer, it's gonna be locked up.
How do you determine how much cash to start?
How do you determine how much cash to start out with to put in the register?
Okay, that being not on the agenda today will be on the next agenda, and I have the ordinance.
The resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry, resolution that will establish that amount and where it's going. So, you can all read that. So, like I said, I worried about it, and you guys were good enough to deal with one.
This was the other part of what you gave out.
Correct.
That answer your question?
That answered.
Establishing the data. Any further questions?
Well, we're gonna need that one too. We do this one, right, sir?
Yeah, well, we'll take a vote on this and then we'll deal with this. We'll do it separately instead of together.
Mr. President, do you, do you know why some of the other auditors are against this?
Yeah, no idea. No idea. It's just another layer of audit improvement. If you feel like it, the more we do...
There's something that you, you, you felt you'd be...
Yes. Every, every, like, I don't want any type of inferiority, uh, to any of the funds taxpayer running this city. If we can add something that prevents something from coming up, and the audit suggests it, we wanna do it, and we have the money to do it. It's just the way we all look at it. We won't, uh, won't, uh, be transparent. So, I mean, we don't want anybody being accused of taking some that they shouldn't be taking. Uh, so if we got your proper accounting and some things like this, it should add to the list to that. Any further questions? Want to take a vote? Louis Hobbs? No. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard would be a no. Melissa Rattler?
Yes.
Karen Wadman?
Yes, sir.
Andy Moniz would be a no. Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, motion carried. Uh... You have any idea what the ordinance number would be? What is it?
Sixteen...
Sixteen five one, I think.
One.
Twenty sixteen five one, I think is what it'd be. Cause it's supposed to be the year, the month, and then the ordinances are in there with one, two, three, four. Yes, sir.
That was an ordinance, right?
An ordinance.
Plan on having three readings?
Huh?
Plan on having three readings?
Yeah, I just noticed it did have an emergency clause on it.
But it didn't, you know, not even...
No, well, you do have to have three readings, just, yeah.
Or you override the three readings.
Exactly. Thank you, Mike. We hadn't done too much this year, uh, but what we need is a motion to suspend the three readings.
I make a motion to suspend the three...
Two-thirds, yeah, take the two-thirds.
Three readings on the ordinance.
Thank you, Mike. Second to the front one. Louis Hobbs? Be a no. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard? Melissa Rattler? Karen Wadman?
Yes, sir.
Andy Moniz? Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman?
Yes.
I'll call you, I know better. Now, it doesn't have an emergency clause. But being an ordinance with no emergency clause, it's gonna go and fix it my first time. So, it's not gonna be a mutant term my first time.
Didn't you hear the word emergency in the, in the reading there?
I don't know, but it did have one.
Well, it's not clause, but the word emergency was in there.
It was in that money. You declared emergency, did that, then you don't have to do the three readings. You all saying some word?
Yeah.
It does say declare emergency.
It's in the title or?
It's in the title.
Okay, it's in the title.
Yeah.
There you go.
Complete, I didn't even, I didn't even catch it.
I guess that covers it, huh?
Yeah, I guess it would.
Come on, I thought the words were...
We'll, we'll do it.
I have some houses that are anything, I'm just...
We'll declare it as emergency. Need a motion to pass with emergency.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance with emergency.
Second.
I don't know why you have to do that, ten more?
You better do it, just, just, just...
Yeah, that's what, uh, we've always done it that way, that way. Have a motion, say I'm gonna take a vote. Louis Hobbs? Be a no. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard? No. Melissa Rattler?
Yes.
Karen Wadman?
Yes, sir.
Andy Moniz would be a no. Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman? Pass with emergency. Let's round that way a little. I knew you should say emergency clause, it says bottom. Yeah, yeah. You said, oh, yes, sorry. Yeah. Mayor vote, yeah. Take the two-thirds, pass emergency. Uh, he did have another one here, the resolution. A resolution providing for the funding of the cash register fund and petty cash money.
That's a resolution.
Yes, it's a resolution.
For your consideration, correct.
Thanks, Ed.
Do you have a copy?
Yours, I choose yours. Alright. Asking for nothing more, nothing less than what we feel it would take to make sure that the customer, of course, gets his change back than what, uh, we're given. And then it'll, uh, stay here, probably actually do with the funds and how they would be controlled.
Go read the resolution. Resolution providing for the funding of the cash register fund and petty cash fund. Whereas necessary maintaining change fund to operate the cash register for front window sales. And whereas it is determined by the mayor and his representatives that the amount of $250 that was in place January 1st, 2015 is more than sufficient to establish and maintain both change fund and petty cash accounts. Whereas determining that $100 in change is sufficient for each fund is determined the balance of $50 to deposit back into the general fund account and that deposits and cash replenishments be reconciled on a weekly basis. Whereas now therefore be it resolved, the resolutions shall take effect and be enforced now and after its passage. Have a motion to pass the resolution?
I make a motion to pass the resolution providing for funding of the cash register fund and petty cash.
Second?
Second.
Second line, Chad. That's for you guys for discussion. Any, got any further questions for the treasurer on this? No questions? And we will take a vote. Karen Wadman?
Yes, sir.
Andy Moniz? Be a no. Dave Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman?
Yes.
Louis Hobbs? Be a no vote. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard? Be a no vote. Melissa Rattler? Motion pass for resolution carried. Only, enjoy your evening.
Do you need a motion to add the reservation to the agenda?
Yeah, would be helpful, wouldn't it?
I make a motion to add the resolution for petty cash fund to the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Stephanie? Make the two-thirds, I'm talking about that. Sign. Okay. Louis Hobbs? Be a no. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard? Melissa Rattler?
Yes.
Karen Wadman?
Yes.
Andy Moniz? Be a no. Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman?
Yes.
Mayor vote signed. Two-thirds, motion carried after the agenda.
Second.
Anybody have any idea what the resolution number would be?
It's R.
Now, R's...
R's the resolution.
Give me a... Uh, what we're gonna do, you got everything signed, and sharing, uh, would be so nice. And the next meeting, she'll have the order numbers on and put them in the papers. Would that be okay with y'all? She'll have to go back and look and see what the, what the actual numbers are, so we'll do that. Anything else, Mr. Treasurer?
Well, I guess for the last and least comment for the council members, and I'm sure Alexander out there will always say the same, I want to thank you for progressive and professional meeting.
Now, next one here, dude, we got, uh, any new bids? You got it? Yes.
Some of the kids have been swimming down the, in the creek over here.
Really?
Yes, sir. And, uh, um, is there anything that we can do to, uh, see if something happens, that someone might have there?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, we'll, we'll try to, no, they don't need to be, uh, not, not, not with type of thing, but we're, I've seen some the other day, yeah, and I went, oh, and, uh, it's not a good thing.
They're not in the marriage, you're not even watching.
The chief of police just heard you. And, uh, you'll be the guy to handle anything, if we need some type of signage or something. I'll get the sirens and get it up. Yes, ma'am, Mr. Treasurer.
Can't you post, no sign?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what we just have to put some signs up on. But in the meantime, uh, we'll try to get the chief of police and the officers to keep an eye on it, make sure nobody's in there until we get some signs posted. Remind me to get some signs, make, that's, we got, we got more stuff going on.
Have we ever come up with a house for the park, if it's what's now, with a car?
No, not yet. Uh, is there any, does it already have?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any, uh, old bids? Well, we didn't have any, we didn't have, didn't have those, I don't know.
Well, uh, new bids, I want to, uh, see about maybe, uh, add it to the, uh, agenda with the two-thirds vote about, uh, giving our prosecutor a raise. Our prosecute attorney.
I like it.
Add it to the agenda.
Second. Now, is that your motion? I guess second about... You want to...
No, it's okay.
Alright, you got it, alright. You gonna take the two-thirds, Ed, if you can, so... Louis Hobbs? Be a no. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard? Be a no. Melissa Rattler?
Yes.
Karen Wadman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You need to call, be a no. Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman? Mayor vote signed for the making two-thirds. So, it's only a candidate this evening. I'll be, I'll, I'll be second, if you can, if you can. I need a vote now.
Make a motion to raise the prosecutor's attorney's pay to seven hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Second?
Second.
Stephanie Beck? Before the city council brings it over to the council. I did want to say, uh, that we do have a third district court system in the county. Not only that, but, uh, she puts in, uh, a lot of hours of work in the, for the chief of police and his department. Also, on different cases and different things that they have come before the court. She spends a lot of extra time that she wasn't doing in the past, so, uh, and it being the third biggest court in the county, uh, she's working a lot harder for the city of Alexander than she does anybody else in this land, county, so, it would, uh, be well deserved. And a lot of the work that she does for the taxpayers here, she's not even doing it. So, she's on the phone, she's answering questions, and she's doing all kinds of other things too, so... And she's, uh, been full support of the city of Alexander too, so that, that really makes it, uh, almost like she leads the person she is. Ian?
It's a fact, and we're, we're here on Mondays, uh, she does a lot of work, uh, that, even though she's not the city attorney, she does a lot for us.
Yeah, she does do a lot for us, and she's not even going.
So, somewhere along the lines, she needs a little restitution?
She does a lot, and she treats it like it's, like it's her state of joint.
I just would add one more thing, and that's in March, uh, this year, we had the largest deposit for the court that as far as I know, we've, we've never had one, like, the 20,000, and it's growing. I mean, they're, they're doing it for the law.
The whole, the whole crew is, so... And, uh, the district judge, she is extremely pleased with the city of Alexander, its court system. And, uh, yeah, and, uh, of course, Pat works really well with everyone too, and then the chief of police and, and everybody else in the city, so, he deserves, so... We'll take a vote. Louis Hobbs? Be a no. Stephanie Beck?
Yes.
Andrew Beard? Melissa Rattler? Karen Wadman?
Yes, sir.
Andy Moniz? Be a no. Dan Church?
Yes.
Lonny Chapman?
Yes.
Motion carried. She'll go from, what, 500 to 750? Now, this name is Georgia, and I need to see thirty, only in the end of, just the majority paid. Any further over here? So, the county?
Good job, Matt. I'm gonna, yeah, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if anybody in the county has known me, my name is Harold Gentlemen. I live on corner of County and Regency. Coming down Regency, uh, walking down, cannot see much, so, I'm outside. I have a mahogany tractor with a bush hole. I am willing to loan to the city at no cost. I will operate it if you got intersections that need to be mowed down, the public can see oncoming traffic. Call me.
Word, word, Ed? Well, now they're regency in one old, one old...
Well, down there at Regency in one, one eleven right now, you come up there, you cannot see drivers coming from the north.
Yeah, we cut that down, real good last year, probably down there by town, you mean?
It's like that now.
Yeah, we cut down last year.
But if you got any intersections that people cannot see, get mine, and do you get your tractor going, I will gladly load these arrows at no cost to the city.
Eight three.
My phone not really, eight four seven, four nine one nine. And that's it going on there, leave a message.
You gotta show your last name, sir.
T I double M, T R N A M.
Kinnaman?
Yes, it's Meran Tinneman.
Eight four seven.
Four nine one nine.
Say everybody know, you've got the sharpest anti-car in the state.
Yes, you do, yes, you do. Now, you know, when you start talking free, you're talking my life.
That's right. My daddy, my granddaddy always said, their, their, uh, model was, if it's free, it's for me. That's mine. And if it's for the safety of the public in Alexander.
Any further, further comments? Andrew Bearden? Enjoying your marriage?
My cross for the dollar store is? There's a guy that's signing still about fifteen days ahead. I called him once a month to keep that grass mowed down, since we built that dollar store, no one has changed that.
That's a lot that needs to be...
All you have to do is call that man, and he will, he gonna get on it, he don't do anything.
Okay, you just got to stay on with that.
You got a sign right in the wall.
We'll send them straight to dry, or the road, or something.
Right, and that needs to be cleared off.
Okay, you know who owned it exactly?
His name is, I said, I can get it for you tomorrow.
Okay, is it on now?
It's on the big board, but the wood, it's grown up, so you can't see it.
No, you can't see it, okay, okay.
It's from my son.
Good, we'll make that phone call.
Okay.
Okay, any, Joanne, do you have something?
Uh, for Mr. Kinnerman, uh, Spruce and Dogwood Ranchette.
Spruce and Dogwood.
Mm-hmm.
I believe, uh, Sharon had something.
Um, if the police change, too, speaking of the dollar store, we've been having some booming music coming through there just about every other day, this, this, I mean, they sit there at the lot, and you can, your house, the houses, fire, yeah, and the music, that, I mean, we should have a loud, important company in the city, but we got several, it's like every day now.
Well, they're falling over there?
Well, when they go in the store, that, that music, uh, are coming down the street at night, it's like, you know, the, the music is extremely loud.
Now, you're a state, you're the state that you're going to look already for, I think.
Someone, appreciate it.
I think there's an Arkansas state that, she's in there now, Arkansas state statute we're doing already?
Uh, there's, that's a loud ordinance, but, yeah, most, most of that doesn't apply until, like, ten o'clock at night, so...
Right, yeah, that's the best of the audio, so, but anyway, maybe you can, head your guys, take your guys, uh, kind of pay a little more attention.
You can hear it if you sit there. Be down in back of the ridge, you could probably hear it.
Still hear it, yeah. Any, Mr. Treasurer?
This is a comment on this young lady's, uh, ordinance, she don't, people don't realize that the deep bass boom does affect pacemakers.
Yeah, that's...
And that it may be proven it will affect pacemakers.
Well, I have one I don't...
We got to take care of Mr. Dorothy. Is any, uh, any further comment? I mean, most of the chairman, most of the chairman.
Second.
All of them? Vote, thank you, sir.